Good evening, I'd like to call to order the April 2nd meeting of the Groton Town Council. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilors Atwater, Franco, Heath, Obray, Parker, Schmidt, Zepiri, and Granataski are here. And I understand that Councilor Baumgartner is on his way, but he's stuck in traffic.
Correct. Would you please stand for a salute to the flag? And would Representative Chase please lead us in the fudge?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, recognitions, awards, and memorials? I don't believe we have anything recorded on Mr. Johnson and his wife receiving the Noink Award last week. Public hearings, I don't believe we have any public hearings. So we are on to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is a portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign this sheet on the table at the front of the room, which I have here. When you are recognized, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during responses to citizens' petition portion of the meeting. This evening, we have four speakers signed up. Richard Cady is first, followed by Dr. Roy Johnson.
My name is Richard Cady. I live at 36 Island View Avenue on Mystic. I've lived at that current address for the past 20-plus years. And I've asked myself time and time again, what is it that I receive for my tax money other than having my road plowed in the winter? I'm not talking about deplorable road conditions. I am talking about the blight problem that I have put up with for the 20-plus years, that the town has seemed to just, I've had to live with it because it doesn't seem to have much interest in the town. I've invited members of both the current as well as previous councils to view our dilemma. I provided them with pictures of the blighted condition to no avail, in spite of starting out with no blight ordinance to having a mediocre ordinance, very poorly written, in which you're currently in process of revising. I attended the council meeting not too long ago, in which I heard a zoning enforcement employee state that the blight conditions only apply to the front of the yard, not to the back. That took me back a little bit. I also presented to the Town of Groton in writing a petition signed by every one of my neighbors on Island View Avenue outlining what we consider a blight problem. We did not receive a verbal response or a written response to said petition to date. The property I refer to is located at 20 Prospect Street, owned by the Zelvin family. The area I'm talking about is the back of their property, which is adjacent to the east side of my front lawn. The area contains an orange shipping container of the type that's used on both tractor trailers and seagoing ships to transfer shipments of goods, complete with advertising the company name painted on the side, which is propped up on wooden blocks that I contend to be a safety hazard. This shipping container should never have been allowed in a residential neighborhood in the first place. Your zoning regulations need to be revised to reflect that. The complete balance of the backyard is littered with trash, as defined by Webster's Dictionary. Contained various containers, both large and small, brush piles, leftover PVC piping, fencing, logs, boatjacks, bags and bags of God only knows what strewn all over the area, along with hideous green plastic lockers across the entire building, which appears to be an attached garage. I expect you to define the word "trash" in your upcoming changes to your zoning ordinance. This is the same neighbor who asked me when I first moved down there 20 some odd years ago if I would support his building a house in his front yard within the inland wetland area, who planted fast-growing pine and other trees and shrubs to completely take away my water views of Fisher's Island, Lone Island Sound, and the Mystic River down to The same person who tried to get the town to accept his huge property to the south for open space, when rejected, developed the property himself and dug up his own front yard and buried huge boulders that were part of where the blasting to prepare for foundations, causing a major dust problem as he had no dust abatement set in place. I had to call the Town of Groton for help to resolve that problem. When my wife came home that day, she found brown dirt all over our family room, on the furniture, on the floor. She had a damp Scott towel, wet towel, went on the floor like this, and I could see the handprint and brown fingers on there. I need your assistance to resolve this issue, which only you can resolve. As I said many, many times before, your decision to ignore this problem has caused me to live with a situation that has reduced my property value substantially. Is this what I get for my taxes? Is this what I can expect from a council made up of my peers? Would you live with it if it was in your front yard? I've done it before, and it's been a long time, and I'll continue to be back here until the day I die. But I issue the extension and the invitation for any of you, all of you, to come down on my property and view this condition. And then I want you to ask yourself, would I live with this if it were in my yard? And if you can honestly individually come back and say to me, "Yeah, I wouldn't mind having that in my yard," then I'll leave you alone. Otherwise, I'm going to keep coming back and coming back again and again and again until I resolve this problem. Thank you very much.
Dr. Ray Johnson, followed by Michael Noel.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Councilors. My name is Dr. Ray Johnson. I live at 85 Prospect Hill Road in Noink. And you have on your agenda this evening termination of the Noink School Public Gardens And while I won't be able to stay here for that termination, I wanted to, as the former chairman of the task force, Vice Chairman of the task force, to let you know that this is something which is quite disconcerting to us. I want to respect those of you who have honored us by your support. For those of you who have opposed our team, we're sorry that we did not meet the expectations that you had, despite the commitment of our members and the dedication to these gardens. They are gardens which meant a great deal to us. We like to think that those gardens enhance the community spirit that existed among the members who came there to garden and to enjoy times together. I think on the 5th of March, you had people speak. There were 35 speakers, 25 of whom were in support of the gardens continuing, 10 of whom were opposed. I think that delivered a very clear message. I cannot say that this is an experience that I have enjoyed. It is an experience from which I have learned. I have learned the importance of our integrity. I've learned the importance of our commitment. I've learned the importance of our dedication to what we've tried to do. As you begin to determine what you want to do with this property, I hope this will be a learning experience for you as well. I'm sure that these endeavors and these engagements have not been any more pleasant for you as they have been for me. But as you go forth determining what to do with the property, I would implore you to give strong consideration to something about which all of you can be proud and all of us can be proud on that property. Please make it something which is beneficial to the entire community and which is worthy of the Town of Groton and the Village of Noink and the Town of Noink. I have appreciated the support that you have given. I've appreciated the opportunity to meet with you, to meet you as human beings. I've had a chance to chat with several of you. I have enjoyed those conversations immensely. More important, I think, it has given me the opportunity to express to you by telephone what I really truly feel about the project and those who've been involved with it. So may this be a learning experience for you. May you think about what you're going to do, when you're going to do it, and how you're going to do it. And at the end, may we all be proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Noel, followed by Kathy Chase. Excuse me.
Good evening. Michael Noel, 100 William Street. I'm in support of the gardens. Recent town council meetings have been nothing short of an ambush on the volunteers, trying to make this corner of town a better place for all to enjoy. Ms. Franco, Mr. Heath, and Mr. Atwater, obviously you have the public gardens on your hit list. Lots of negative comments, many of them untrue, and you know it. I appreciate your always placing the Noink School Public Gardens near the end of the agenda, trying to wear us out. It has been noticed, sarcastic thank you to the council. The Noink Fire District supplies water at no cost to the gardens as a courtesy. Mr. Atwater falsely stated the water isn't even used. Yes, it is used. Mr. Atwater, there are a lot of people on who have volunteered their time and money to help develop the gardens. I can't believe you actually measured the garden beds to figure out square footage. Why not spend this time lending a hand to help beautify the gardens with us? It was never our intention to cultivate the entire property. Kids need space to play. Mr. Heath's comments about the task force mismanagement of money pledged to the gardens were untrue and I believe were presented to shed a negative light on our task force. Your influence in speaking as an elected official is significant and I believe was intentionally misleading. I believe this was an abuse of power and that you should resign from the council. We truly appreciate Councilor Schmidt, Zepiri, and Baumgartner's support for the gardens. I would also like to point out that past town council meetings, when Councilor Baumgartner was speaking favorably about the gardens, Councilor Franco appeared to deliberately turn her back on him. I thought this was rude and disrespectful and not the way a town councillor should act. I thought it was very interesting that the mayor of the city of Groton, Keith Hedrick, came to the town council meeting to speak against the gardens. For the rest of you taxpayers out there in the Town of Groton, you should know that as a town resident, if you don't live in the city, you can't run for the city council. But if you live in the city, you can run for the town council. Washington Park covers 37 acres and is located in the city. I make a motion that we sell this partial. I'm sure we could get a lot for it. It's assessed at $4 million and has great highway access. Would it noticeably reduce our taxes? Probably not. Of course, I'm kidding about this, but I want to make a point that open space is needed in all corners of town. Remember the Merritt Farm was supposed to be open space, too? Groton Public Garden, Noink Public Garden, does it really matter what you call it? People who live in the city are not likely to visit the gardens here, just as folks on this side of town are not likely to use Washington Park. The Public Garden Committee has reached out to the entire town to invite people to come share the open space with us. Public donations were used to purchase lumber. Volunteers built beautiful picnic tables for all to use. These tables were full of people during a pizza party last fall where the public was invited. Shame on the town council member who scolded us for having a pizza party to celebrate the gardens. The pizza party was just one of our social events used to get more community involvement, and it worked. Every cent used to pay for this party was raised through donations. Not one cent came from the town, yet the town council criticized us for having this event. And let me assure you that our garden task force is perfectly functional despite the ramblings of one certain disgruntled task force member who voiced her displeasure with the group despite having never shown up for a single work party or social gathering. I'd like to thank the town councilors, past and present, who have supported the public gardens. I urge the town council to reverse Mr. Atwater's motion to terminate the four-year agreement and to allow our volunteer workforce to continue working to make this corner a better place, corner of town a better place. Please remember that all the trees planted were donated, and they were all planted with volunteer labor at no cost to the town. A good portion of the mowing is done by hard-working neighbors, and water is provided by the Noink Fire District, also at no cost to the town. We have a permit from the Noink Zoning Enforcement Officer to build a pavilion. We just need the council's approval. Please vote against Mr. Atwater's motion to rescind our four-year agreement. Instead of development, let's leave the legacy of...
You have one minute, sir.
Instead of development, let's leave a legacy of open space and beautiful trees. If you sell it, you'll never get it back. Do the right thing. Remember and honor our four-year agreement with the town, which runs through December 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noel.
Kathy Chase, 146 Indian Field Road, and I'm an RTM member representing District One. Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilors. I'm here today to support the rescission of the Noink Garden Agreement. A survey was conducted between June 22nd and July 27th, 2011, regarding the Noink School property. Many respondents at that time suggested the land be sold to grow the ground less and bring in more tax revenue. Back in 2011, it was quoted in the survey that the land was worth $1.5 million. Now, it was stated at one town council meeting it is worth $1.9 million. One respondent to the survey in 2011 put it very succinctly, stating, quote, "When the Noink School property was declared surplus by the town, we should at that time give citizens two weeks to come forward with a compelling reason to keep it as town property. It appears that there is no compelling idea for the property to remain in town hands. Therefore, we should put a 'for sale' sign on it tomorrow and return it to the private sector ASAP. As far as any specific use a private owner may desire for the property that is a zoning issue. We have an in-place structure to handle zoning, especially in Noink. We should not use citizen committees to outrun zoning." And we are still talking about this eight years later. Haley Farm is very close to Noink. People that live in Noink can go there to commune with nature and have gardens in their own backyards. If this land is sold at market value and a developer wants to put housing on it, they will work with zoning to fabricate the houses to fit into the neighborhood, like Nantucket does for one. This land is costing taxpayers money as it stands today. The town must maintain insurance on the property and do general maintenance. The town also provides the water source, and I heard from someone that lives in that area that that water department up there, those citizens, pay for the water. I haven't fact-checked that, but that's what I was told. In an attorney letter to the task force dated September 1st, 2011, it stated, "It is often extremely difficult to accurately gauge the sentiments of the entire community, particularly when the same vocal minority regularly attend town meetings and workshops," end quote. The majority that filled this room last month does not reflect the sentiment of 40,000 people. The decision needs to be made using facts, not emotions. The current task force has not abided by the agreement that has been in place for five years. When the land is sold, a piece of the property can be retained for a small neighborhood park or garden. However, that piece must not hinder the development of or reduce the value of the remaining piece of land. The 2020 budget is in process. The state is trying to decide how much, if any, costs will be passed down to towns. We have the new schools to pay for and regular high-cost maintenance of the town. $1.5 million will be taken out of the fund balance for FY 2020, so there won't be a mill increase. This is not sustainable. If we don't start thinking about the necessities and not the wants of Groton, we are going to have some big problems. Decisions by the council must be made for the town as a whole, not just one neighborhood. We must think about the future and be proactive now and not be reactive when we are under the gun regarding the financial health of the town. And I printed this off the town website today, and all this green is open space, and there's some more up here, but my paper's not big enough. But all the green is open space, and there's quite a number of pieces down here near Noink. And I have two 1 and 1/4 sides of paper just on open space and places that people can go in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone that's signed up on the list. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak at this point? Okay, seeing none, we are on to item number six, responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Should the council have responses? Counselor Heath?
Just to address the issue of the $80,000, I did actually, I don't see you, there you are. I did apologize the last time. The information I received was from a very good reputable source. The problem is, I misunderstood it because I moved to town around 2011, got involved around that time. So I assumed it was the same group of people, different name for the organization. So again, I apologize. That was, you know, my mistake. But I did want to go on and say, I wrote it up because without a script, I'm pretty terrible. Thanks to the many people who spoke during citizens' petitions today and during the previous council meeting, as well as the emails, the phone calls, the face-to-face conversations, speaking both in favor and against the arrangement, that's really, you know, we need that for democracy to function, so I appreciate that. I also want to go on and, more importantly, acknowledge that there have been enormous efforts by countless people over several years. And I know personally, it's very difficult to be involved in volunteer work. There's always a critic. There's always another way that you can do something. And I think we can move beyond that right now by having the Parks and Rec take it over, at least for the time being, set up some garden plots. They manage the property behind the Human Services Building. Maybe this will give us a chance to sort of get the temperatures down, get the gardens going again, and see what happens.
Thank you. Counselor Obray?
I just wanted to speak with the first speaker. As you know, I did go to your property, and I have worked with planning on the blight situation. And one of my questions as we were meeting was, why can't we go in the backyards to see it?
I can't move up there a little, I can't posit it.
Okay.
Get a little closer there, if you don't mind.
Come on up.
Why don't you move closer to that? That way, it'll be amplified for Mr. Cady.
Okay. I was just saying that I did come to your house, and I did see the problem that you have. And I did work with planning to try to make some changes with the blight ordinances. And one of the questions that I kept asking was, why can't we go in the backyard? If we have a problem, we should be able to go in the backyard. Well, unfortunately, we can legally go into somebody's backyard unless there is a problem that you can see, like maybe rats running out of a backyard or something like that. But it has to be something that's that visible in order to be able to ask for the appropriate person to let you go into the backyard. So unfortunately, there's not much we can do other than the front of somebody's property. I absolutely agree that you have a very unique situation, and it's very unpleasant. And it probably sounds a little callous for me to say, but truly, the only thing you can do is put up some trees, and that's about all I can advise. But I have tried, and there have been changes made. But we can't make the change that you really need because they took it as far as asking attorneys for advice on it, and they said that we just could not do that unless we are invited into a backyard.
Excuse me, Mr. Burt would like to speak next, please. Thank you.
Just to mention, I've been at Property Two Advent with you and spoke with you a few times, it's been over a year ago now. That storage container did have a permit. There was nothing we could do. I have actually already emailed the planning just to take, we've got the new ordinance in place, let's just take a fresh look at it, just to make sure there's nothing we can do under the revised rules. And then I've asked them to include our attorney again, so we'll double-check to see if there's anything we can do. No promises, but we can certainly check again.
As far as the container is concerned, you can change the zoning regulations to eliminate...
You couldn't eliminate an existing one.
...the laws, but if they're eliminated from somebody else's...
Thank you, Mr. Cady. Thank you, Mr. Burt, for checking on that. Counselors Zepiri?
I think we'll have to talk another time.
Just in regard to this problem, the council and the city administration is not your only avenue to remedy this problem. There is an issue called nuisance, and you have a right to go to the courts and file a suit for nuisance. And if it's as bad as you say it is, you probably will prevail in the court. I want to tell you that I'm an attorney, and I'm telling you that to tell you that I will not accept your case, only because I sit here at the council. I don't think that would be appropriate. But you could find another attorney, and that would be another avenue for you.
What is the term?
Nuisance. You have a right to the quiet enjoyment of your property. And if somebody is doing something on adjacent property that interferes with your quiet enjoyment of your property, they've done you a wrong for which the courts can provide a remedy. If they've done something that makes your property less valuable, they've done a wrong to you that you have a right to a remedy in court. So that's another avenue that you can pursue. I have some other comments that don't pertain to Mr. Cady, so when we get through with this, I would like another attorney to speak.
So, Mr. Cady, Counselors Zepiri has your email. I think we all have your email. So perhaps, Counselors Zepiri, you could reach out to Mr. Cady via email just to brief him on your suggestion, if you don't mind?
I just did.
Thank you. He doesn't have anything to write anything down, so it would probably be a very nice idea if you could email him directly. But thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Cady. Okay, let's see. One, two, three. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, we'll go back to Counselors Zepiri. Back to you, Counselors Zepiri.
I just wanted to tell the folks from the Noink Gardens Task Force that I'm sorry about the turn of events that have occurred. I just want you to know that last week, I gave notice of intent to move that the decision to terminate the agreement with the Noink Gardens Task Force, that we rescind that decision. I am under the impression that that motion will be on the agenda for the next committee of the whole meeting on April 9th. So we're not quite dead yet. I'm not sure what we can gain, but we'll have to look at it one more time.
Are there any other responses to citizens' petitions? Seeing none, we are on to consent calendar. Counselor Parker, item, Roman numeral seven, please. If you could just move everything as one.
I make a motion to move all items on the consent calendar. So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Parker, seconded by Obray.
Sorry, I'm not used to doing it that way.
It's all right. So this includes the town council minutes on page three, followed by the March 12 minutes, followed by the special trust fund contributions, and the various appointments. Counselor Heath, did you wish to speak to the appointments at all?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Oh, yes, I do have a question for the town clerk. On the appointments, do people need to be sworn in for all of those positions? Ethics commission, I would think so, but what about beautification?
Yes, I do. And once you make your appointment, once the appointments are approved by the town council, my office will send a letter notifying the appointees and instructions to come in for an oath of office. We do this so that their names are put into a book for posterity.
Okay, very good. Are there any other comments on the minutes, the contributions, or the appointments? Just to think, I think there was one typo, but I don't remember what page it was on. Oh, on page six, Mr. Walter's name, I believe is Brian, B-R-I-A-N. Anyone have anything else they would like to address with the consent calendar? On page...
Which minutes?
Page six of the March 5th minutes.
Item two.
Item two, it's the list of citizens' petitions. Mr. Walter, his name is... Item two, it's the list of citizens petitions. Mr. Walter, his name is Brian.
He seems like a pretty smart coach.
I'm sure he is, but I sure prefer Brian to brain, so. Brain is nice, yes. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor of acceptance of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we are at eight, and that is unanimous. Communications and reports, Counselor Parker.
I attended the 60th installation, along with Counsel Franco, installation of officers at Groton Local 2163. Wonderful evening. Thank you for the invite and the wonderful time. Congratulations to all who were installed, and thank you for those who are the past ones, and thank you for giving back to our community.
Counsel Franco.
That's all right. Well, she took whatever, and I was gonna say, but I will say that I enjoyed myself. That was the first time I had attended an installation, and the dinner was absolutely delicious. And I believe we all attended public hearing and budget meetings this week as well.
Counselor Heed.
I have a new chef, so.
It was really, really good.
I have done only budget meetings in the past week and other things, so nothing to report.
Counselor Overy, welcome back.
Thank you. I attended several Red Sox games, that's training camp. Now I'm back.
Counsel Atwater.
I attended a SCAR, our recycling authority meeting. They had a special meeting to vote on a new 10-year contract. And I will say that the rates for disposing of our trash are really quite good. And then this morning, I was at the Children's First Groton monthly meeting.
Thank you. Counsel Schmitt. No report. Counselors of Perry?
I visited the Mystic No Ink Library on Friday, and I'm very much impressed that that is a gem that must be preserved. Although we have a central library in Groton, and the town doesn't need three libraries, we have a historical site there that is precious, and we should not lose it. So that's something I'll discuss when that issue comes up again. I also visited the No Ink Public Garden today to look around. And I noticed the lawn, the grass was cut close for the winter, and the place did not look as bad as it has in the past. So I think that there's hope for that piece of land, and we'll talk about that later also.
Thank you. I wanted to thank Counsel Parker and Counsel Franco for attending the Elks installation on behalf of the council. I was unable to attend, and they graciously went in our stead and represented us very well. Thank you very much. Clerk of the representative town meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The representative town meeting will be meeting again on the 10th. They are putting together their schedule for budget sessions for their committees, and you'll get that scheduled as soon as it's complete.
Clerk of the council.
I have the same information that you do, so.
Town manager.
Just was put on the sector board, so I just had my first meeting there. Yesterday and today, we had bond rating agency review before the bond sale coming up, S&amp;P, Fitch, and Moody's. Last time, if you remember, Moody's is the toughest of the three, and they gave us a negative outlook last time. We're pretty confident we're gonna get that removed, so hopefully. It went well. All three went well, though. Plastics ordinance, the draft is done, it's gone to the attorneys for review. After that, I would like to get, once that's reviewed, send it to the conservation commission to get their input, and then I would bring it to the council. That's about it today.
Very good. Oh, I forgot to mention that the Southeastern Connecticut Cultural Coalition is going to be having their spring event here in Groton, which is a nice thing. Years past, they've done it at Jonathan Edwards Winery. This year, they are going to be at Par Four in early May, so we'll have more details as we get closer. And I don't believe we have any of the department heads, or the superintendent, or the board here. Committee reports. I have nothing from committee of the whole, temporary rules, personnel appointments and rules. Counsel Heed.
Nothing to report.
And no public safety, so we're on to new business, Roman numeral 10. I'm sorry, did you have something?
I just had a quick question. I know there's no department head here, but I was in communication with John Burt and Mr. Schneider regarding the trees.
Yes.
I didn't know if he wanted to speak on that.
I don't have my notes with me. I did put something in my weekly report to the council, but.
I'm sorry.
What was the question here?
Do you have it, or you want me to get it on the iPad? Just while he's looking up.
Okay, in terms of the article about different diseases and things that can affect trees, and how are we affected here? Sorry. Gary indicated that, he's of course the tree warden, he indicated that we've been pretty lucky here. A lot of things have not reached Groton. For instance, gypsy moths have stayed north of I-95. Leger was devastated. There's been not a lot of effect here. We were affected by drought. Emerald Ash Borer has not worked its way up to, it's not worked its way to Groton yet. Eversource is working with municipalities to take down any affected trees. We budget $30,000 per year for tree removal. We do spend all of that. Once in a while, we have to take just a little bit out of other parts of the budget, but generally, that's pretty close to what we need to do with the trees. We've taken down 28 trees in the last year, and 2018, six so far this year. He doesn't see a need to increase the budget at this time. But we'll continue to monitor if anything looks to be encroaching on Groton, and he'll let us know.
I just brought it up because I know one of the towns like up north, like in Brooklyn, they had to take down 600 trees. And we just have to keep an eye on what's going on, because I guess there's, what was, a boar eating?
Emerald Ash Borer?
Yeah.
And I had a nature preserve in my last position, and I had to clear cut about 10 acres of asteries because of Emerald Ash Borer. I know how devastating it could be.
But they're not here, so we're lucky right now.
Rachel could continue to swim through the branches.
All right, we are on to Roman numeral 10A, and I believe we're at Counselor Franco, correct? This is 2019-233-1, Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act application. On page 27.
The town council will hold a public hearing per state statute 7-163E on May 7, 2019, at 6:30 PM, or soon thereafter, for the 2019 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program proposal for the Southeastern Connecticut Television, and direct the town clerk to publish the notice thereof twice per the referenced statute. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. And at the committee of the whole, we had quite a few people here from SEC TV that we're here to represent and seek our support for this application. Any discussion?
I have just one question.
Yes.
Is that the one down on?
You're on the wrong one.
Oh, yeah?
Yep, go back one page, 27. We have a bunch of these tonight, grant applications. We're on the one for SEC TV right now.
Okay, I'm fine.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote on 2019-233, Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act application. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. Counselor Heed, we are on to 2019-222-1, Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals, scheduling a public hearing on page 28, please.
I've got a different number on this one. It's 2019-222.
Yes, what did I say? I'm sorry. 2019-222-1?
Oh, dash one. There's no dash one on this page, but it's on the agenda.
Okay.
That just means it's a new version. That's the second time it's been on.
Gotcha. I'll make a motion, resolved that the town council will hold a public hearing per state statute 7-163, the letter E, on May 7, 2019, at 6:30 PM, for the 2019 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals for the Groton Community Center, Sacred Heart School, Riverfront Children's Center, Mystic River Congregate, and direct the town clerk to publish the notice thereof twice per the referenced statute. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Heed and seconded by Franco. God bless you.
Thank you.
This is the item where we are forwarding grant applications on behalf of these three organizations. And once again, I'll just state that I am a member of the Sacred Heart School Advisory Board.
And I am also.
Any discussion on this item? Yes, Counsel Overy.
Do they write and submit their own grants?
Yes, they do. We don't have anything to do with it except for it has to be passed through the town.
Gotcha.
Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2019-222, Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals, scheduling a public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. We are on to item 10C, 2019-218-1, Sandy Hollow Road Tree Trimming and Limb Removal, Public Hearing. Counselor Overy, please. This is page 29.
Recommend action, resolved that the town council will hold a public hearing per state statute 7-163E on May 7, 2019, at 6:30 for the Sandy Hollow Road Trimming and Limb Removal Project. Request that the town council act on the request after the public hearing has closed, and direct the town clerk to publish the notice thereof twice per the referenced statute.
Is there a second? Moved by Overy and seconded by Schmitt. Again, this is scheduling a public hearing. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. Item 10D, 2019-2011, Tax Increment Financing, Thame Street, Five Corners Master Plan Review, on page 30, please. Counsel Atwater.
How come I didn't get it once finished?
Luck of the draw.
A resolution to refer the city and town joint tax increment financing district master plan to the Planning Commission and to set a public hearing date for said plan. Whereas the town of Groton has completed a townwide market analysis with a recommendation to research and implement tax increment financing, TIF, T-I-F, in Groton. And whereas TIF is used to invest in economic development by allowing some or all of public and/or private costs associated with the development to be financed over time by increases in the property tax revenues that are generated by the new development. And whereas the TIF district will contribute to the economic growth and well-being of Groton. And whereas the town of Groton adopted a tax increment financing policy on March 6, 2018, which outlines the process of planning for reviewing, approving, and implementing TIF districts. And whereas the city of Groton Joint TIF Advisory Committee and Economic Development Commission voted to recommend the district master plan to the city council. And the Groton TIF Advisory Committee voted to recommend the district master plan to the Economic Development Commission. And whereas the Economic Development Commission recommends passing the city and town TIF district master plans. And whereas the town council and city council, in accordance with Chapter 105B of the Connecticut General Statute State, shall refer the city and town TIF district master plan to their respective planning commissions to determine the plan's consistency with the Groton Plan of Conservation and Development. And whereas the tax increment financing plan will be a new economic development tool to encourage development and redevelopment in planned targeted areas in Groton. And now therefore, be it resolved that the town council hereby refers the draft city and town of Groton Joint Tax Increment Financing TIF District Master Plan as written to the Planning and Planning and Zoning Commission, and schedule a public hearing for the master plan on September 3, 2019. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Atwater and seconded by Parker. Counsel Baumgartner arrived, so we are now at nine counselors at this point in the meeting. Any discussion on 2019-201? Counsel Overy.
On the last paragraph, where it says the plan as written to the Planning and Zoning Commission and schedule a public hearing, does that mean that we are doing a public hearing, or is the city as well doing a public hearing?
Mr. Burt, it goes through both at this step, does it not?
Yeah, I think there's Parker maybe doing a joint, one between the two councils, I believe.
I beg your pardon?
I think there's plans to do a joint meeting with the two councils for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I will double check that, though, and confirm that tomorrow.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item? And again, all of these items that we're voting tonight, we've discussed in committee of the whole, so we're not just rubber standing. All right, seeing no further discussion, we will vote on 2019-201, Tax Increment Financing, Thame Street, Five Corners Master Plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously, nine, zero, zero. We are on to 2019-221-1, Bonds to be Issued in FYE 2019, and this is on page 31. Counselor Schmitt.
Whereas the town of Groton authorized $8,230,000 sewer bonds for improvements to the water pollution control facility pursuant to ordinance number 283. And whereas ordinance number 283 authorizes the town council to determine the amount of bonds to be sold, therefore be it resolved that $6,700,000 bond anticipation notes be sold pursuant to said ordinance. Whereas the town of Groton authorized $180,500,000 school bonds for the Groton 2020 Plan pursuant to ordinance number 284. And whereas ordinance number 284 authorizes the town manager and the finance director to determine the amount of bonds to be sold, therefore be it resolved that $20 million general obligation bonds and $15 million general obligation bond anticipation notes be sold pursuant to said ordinance. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Schmitt and seconded by Zo Perry. Any discussion or questions on this particular item? Counselors of Perry.
I think there was a small error in reading in the third paragraph from the bottom. Whereas the town of Groton authorized $184,500,000 school bonds for the Groton 2020 Plan pursuant to ordinance number 284. Just a small correction.
Oh, thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Baumgartner.
Just a question for town manager. So the increase in debt service will be attributable to, the more sizable increase in debt service will be attributable to the issuance, the $20 million issuance of the GEO bonds?
Correct.
Separate from the bands?
Yeah, the bonds hit now for that 1.7 million in the budget for the new year, and then we'll do bonds for the bands in one year.
Counsel Atwater.
A question for Mr. Burt. It's my understanding that in the last sentence, that the $20 million is the total bond obligation, but $15 million is sold on like a one-year note?
Right.
So that it's phased in. It's not 35 million as well?
Right, correct.
Right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we will vote on 2019-221, Bonds to be Issued in FYE 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. We are on to Roman numeral 10F, 2019-534, Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, 2019 Application, on page 32. Counsel Atwater. Counselors of Perry has a longer resolution.
Yeah.
Counselors of Perry.
Resolution authorizing the submission of a small cities community development block grant application from Mystic River Homes Congregate 2. Whereas federal monies are available under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, 42 U.S. Code, Section 5301, that's equator, as amended, also known as the Public Law 93383, and administered by the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development as the Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. And whereas pursuant to Chapter 127C in Part 6 of Chapter 130, the Connecticut General Statutes. the Connecticut General Statutes, the Commissioner of the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to disburse such federal monies to local municipalities. And whereas, the town of Groton wishes to provide financial assistance to the eligible public housing provider to upgrade their residence buildings and, and, buildings, making them decent, safe, and sanitary. And whereas, the town of Groton conducted public hearings to receive citizens' comments on housing and community development needs, prioritizing public housing modernization as a community need. And whereas, it is desirable and in the public interest that the town of Groton make application to the state for $1,500,000 in order to undertake a small cities community, community development project and to execute an assistance agreement. Therefore, should one be offered, now therefore be it resolved by the town council of the town of Groton that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes. And two, that filing of an application for state financial assistance by the town of Groton in amount not to exceed $1,500,000 is hereby approved and that John Burt, town manager, is hereby authorized and directed to file such application with the Commissioner of the Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information to execute such other documents as may be required by the Commissioner to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for financial assistance if such an agreement is offered. To execute any amendments, recessions, recessions for financial assistance if such an agreement is offered. Pardon me. To execute any amendments, recessions, and revisions thereto to implement, implement project activities if approved and to act as the authorized representative of the town of Groton and to execute any other agreement or contract relative to said project. Three, that it adopts or has adopted on behalf of the town of Groton a policy to support the following non-discrimination agreements and warranties provided in subsection AJ of the Connecticut General Statute, Section 4A-60 and 4A-60A respectively, as amended by Public Act 07-142 and for which purposes the contractor is the town of Groton and the contract is said assistance agreement. The contractor agrees and warrants that the performance of the contract, such contractor will not discriminate or permit discrimination against any person or group of persons on the grounds of race, color, religious creed, age, marital status, national origin, ancestry, sex, mental retardation, or physical disability, including but not limited to blindness unless it is shown by such contractor that such disability prevents performance of the work involved in any manner prohibited by the laws of the United States or the State of Connecticut. The contractor further agrees to take affirmative action to ensure that applicants with job-related qualifications are employed and that employees are treated when employed without regard to their race, color, religious creed, age, marital status, national origin, ancestry, sex, mental retardation, or physical disability, including but not limited to blindness unless it is shown by such contractor that such disability prevents performance of the work involved. The contractor agrees and warrants that in the performance of the contract, such contractor will not discriminate or permit discrimination against any person or group of persons on the grounds of sexual orientation in any manner prohibited by the laws of the United States or the State of Connecticut and that employees are treated when employee, when employed, without regard to their sexual orientation. I so move.
Second. Moved by Zepari and seconded by Schmidt, thank you, Council Zepari. Any discussion on the block grant application? Council O'bury. Yes, Council Schmidt. Moved by Zepari, seconded by Schmidt, I apologize, go ahead.
Mystic River Homes Congregate 2, which part is that, do you know?
All I know is it's over by BBK on Elm Street, I believe, but I don't know, I don't have any details.
The colleges, or the high-rise?
I'm not sure.
I believe it's the one in the back because they were discussing an elevator.
Okay, thank you.
Council Heed.
Make a motion that you read that again, please.
Seconded now. Alright, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of 2019-534 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant 2019 Application, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, so moved unanimously. We're on to item Roman numeral 10G, 2019-187-1 Deputy Finance Director Position, on page 34. Council Baumgartner, please.
Resolution requesting to reinstate a deputy director of finance position and approve the revised job description. Whereas, the town of Groton seeks to reinstate the deputy director of finance position while expanding the responsibilities previously assigned. And whereas, the job description has been updated to accurately capture new and evolving tasks to better support the town. And whereas, this position will report directly to the director of finance. And whereas, this position will not only support the director of finance, but will also play a critical role in the conversion of the Enterprise Resource Planning, ERP, project. And whereas, the deputy director of finance will expand representation across committee meetings and will provide a greater oversight of departmental cost controls. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves the town manager to reinstate the deputy director of finance position, approves the revised job description, and permits the Human Resource Department to post and fill such position, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Zepari. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-187-1 Deputy Finance Director Position, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, so moved unanimously. Roman numeral 10H, 2019-231 Police Title and Job Description Changes for OA 3, on page 35. Council Parker, please.
Resolution authorizing new job description for a non-union executive assistant police department position and filing of, filling of said position. Whereas, the town of Groton Police Department is creating a new job description for a non-union executive assistant position to better meet the needs of the town and the department. And whereas, the job description as proposed will not create any new full-time positions during the current fiscal year. And whereas, the job description will replace the existing AF SME Union Office Assistant 3 position in the department. And whereas, the AF SME, ME, Union has approved of this change in position, now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby approves the non-union executive assistant police department job description and authorizes the town manager fill said position. I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Any discussion on this item? Council Baumgartner.
Just to clarify, town manager, to manager Burt, we're not displacing any current position, correct?
No, no.
It's an unfilled position.
No, one person, they'll just have their position changed to this position.
No further questions.
Seeing no further questions, we will vote on 2019-231 Police Title and Job Description Changes for OA 3. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to item Roman numeral 10I, 2019-221 OPDS Title and Job Description Changes for OA 2 Positions, on page 36. Council Franco, please.
Resolution authorizing creation of two new job descriptions and filling of said positions in the Office of Planning and Development Services. Whereas, the town of Groton Department of Planning and Development Services is creating two new job descriptions for building permit technician and economic development technician to better meet the needs of the town and the department. And whereas, the job descriptions as proposed will not create any new full-time positions during the current fiscal year. And whereas, the job descriptions will replace two existing office assistant 2 positions in the department. And whereas, the job descriptions as proposed will better reflect department and division responsibilities, enhance services to the taxpayer, and afford the town of Groton greater efficiencies. And whereas, the job descriptions being added are as follows, building permit technician and economic development technician. And whereas, these proposed changes will better serve the goals and mission of the Department of Planning and Development Services. And now therefore be it resolved, the town council hereby approves the two above referenced job descriptions and authorizes the town manager to fill said positions provided that there is no increase in full-time positions. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Heed. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll vote on 2019-221 OPDS Title and Job Description Changes for OA 2 Positions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to Roman numeral 10J, 2019-1412 Termination of the Noank Gardens Task Force Guiding Document, this is on page 37. Council Heed.
Make a motion, resolve that the guiding document between the town of Groton and the Noank School Public Garden Task Force hereby terminated and be it further resolved that the town council directs the town manager to consult with staff and offer a recommendation as a potential use of the property, with all potential uses to include a small area for a public garden, a small natural playground area, and a perimeter buffer. Be it further resolved that a new three-member task force shall be appointed to allow for the current garden spot to be cultivated in spring of 2019 until such time as the town council makes a decision on future use of the town property. Town parks and recreation staff shall operate the community garden until such time as the task force is prepared to accept responsibility. I so move.
Second. Moved by Heed and seconded by Franco. Is there discussion on this item? Council Zepari.
There is pending a motion to rescind this motion from the committee of the whole. And that supposedly will be heard on April 9th. And we'll discuss that on April 9th. And since that's affecting this, that's the basis for this motion, I move that we postpone this decision until the next town council meeting.
I hear no second for that motion.
I'll second it, I'm sorry.
Seconded by O'bury. So the mo, the motion was to postpone until when?
The next town council meeting.
Can you give me a date, please?
I don't know the date of the next town council.
May.
May.
May what? Thank you. So the motion is to postpone action on this item until May 7th, moved by Zepari and seconded by O'bury. Is there discussion on this mo, motion? Council Baumgartner.
Actually, not a question on the motion, but actually, yes, I think it'd be relevant to both motions on the floor. Manager Burt, do we know if the task force has suspended fundraising because of?
There was an email that went around that they had sent out to suspend fundraising. However, their treasurer contacted me to see if they could set up a meeting this week to talk about, you know, this eventuality, to discuss what would happen when the funds already collected. I'm just waiting to hear back from their treasurer. I, I gave a date, I was trying to set it up for tomorrow morning, but I've not heard back yet.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be some sort of, you know, if we get a documentation on all of the, of all of the donations, we look at what's spent, make sure all bills are cleared through, and then it'd probably be a probation based on what's given, something like that.
So the discussion should be pertinent to postponement of this item. Is there, is there any discussion on the postponement of this item? Council O'bury.
I think under the circumstances, it would probably make a lot more sense to postpone this until we have our next period of discussion and then go forward.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we will vote on the move to postpone this item until the May 7th town council meeting. If you could raise your hand if you're in favor of postponing, please? Baumgartner? O'bury? Schmidt? Zepari? Opposed? Please raise your hand. I can't, right, and raise at the same time. Parker? Franco? Heed? Granatoski? And Atwater? That motion fails, four in favor, five opposed, you're abstentions. So we're back to the main motion, 2019-141 Termination of the Noank Gardens Task Force Guiding Document. Council Zepari.
I don't want to, I, I will discuss this more next week, but I just want to point out that I believe we hurt the council when we don't follow through with commitments that we've made. I've heard the argument made as that the task force didn't meet their commitment because they really didn't develop the property and because they didn't file minutes of meetings. I think the town council should be held to a higher standard. This town is run by volunteers. All of our commissions and committees are volunteers. And when the council makes a commitment to them, I think we owe it to them to respect the work that they've done on the projects that they have and to live up to our commitment. So I think that hurts us. I, I also think that there's going to be some difficulty in managing that property by another group. So I think there will be additional expenses for the town in managing that property. And so I would like to see us not go through with this, this termination of the agreement with the Noank Gardens Task Force.
Council Parker?
Just, it's just a clarification. We're only terminating who is currently managing the garden, correct?
That's what the motion says, correct?
So they would still be able to garden? And that, I believe that's what the discussion was, they asked to still have the garden. And, am I confusing the issue?
No. We met with, Council Schmidt and I met with Mr. Burt and several members of the task force. And one of the requests was that they be permitted to get plants in the ground for the spring. And that's why this is written the way it is, so that they can continue on during what they're doing. And I don't see that there will be an additional cost as the town is already the group maintaining the property. The town is the one that's mowing the property. So there should not be any additional costs at this point. Did you have further questions, Council Parker?
I'll, I'll ask, I'll give somebody else a chance.
Council O'bury, Schmidt, and then Zepari.
I know it sounds like we're debating all this again, but the thing is that the information that we received is that the town rec department would have to take it over. There has to be somebody to register people if they do want to come and plant. There has to be somebody to mow. So we are going to be taking on the responsibilities of it, even though the rec department said that they didn't have the time or the staff. So I don't think it's appropriate at this point until we have some clarification on that to, to really go forward, because our plan is in place.
Council Schmidt?
And I think that if we voted for this resolution, that it would be terminating the document between the town of Groton and the Noank School Public Garden Task Force. And so anything else would be something new set up by the council. I do feel that there would have been a better way to approach the Noank group to make sure that these minutes were being done.
that these minutes were being done properly and submitted properly so that we would have a complete record of what was being done, and that would have been something that would have been very helpful, and they could have gone along with that and found a way to complete the different guidelines that the town already has. So I'm very much opposed to making this termination of the document, and I would hope that we would honor our commitment that was made by a previous council.
Counselors Zepari?
Just as a point of clarification, the motion states that the property will be explored for potential uses and retain a small portion for a community garden. In other words, it would be developed commercially or for residents or for some other purpose, and only a small portion would be retained. That's what, that's what it says in there, or at least it gives that potential.
The resolution says, "We are asking the manager to consult with staff and offer a recommendation as to potential uses of the property, with all potential uses to include a small area for a garden, small natural playground area, and a perimeter buffer," is what the resolution says.
I thought that was.
There's been no decisions made because town staff has not had a chance to do what is requested in this resolution. Any other discussion?
Counselor Heath?
I think it's just important to note that this is going to keep coming back to us until we resolve it, and so my feeling is, I could be on the council for two years, I could be on for four, six, eight, 10 years, whatever, it's going to keep coming back. So in my feeling, you know, a speaker before mentioned Washington Park. Washington Park is owned by the city fire district. Washington Park is maintained by the city taxpayer. There is no expense to anybody else, it's their decision what they want to do with the property. This is a town property, I think we should have a final decision that nobody is going to come back next year and change. To Counselor Schmidt's point, we should be able to respect the decisions of previous councils, and I think that's why it's really important that we make a good decision with whatever the final dispensation is, because people aren't happy with what's been done so far. Some people are, some aren't, there's, you know, a lot of criticism that goes around all across, you know, both sides. I just want to fix it. I want to do the right thing.
Seeing no further discussion, we will vote on 2019-141-2, Termination of the Noank Gardens Task Force Guiding Document. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Parker, Franco, Heath, Granatoski, Atwater. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Baumgartner, O'Bry, Schmidt, Zepari, and no abstentions. That motion passes. Five in favor, four opposed, zero abstentions. We are on to Roman numeral 10K, 2019-232-1, Town Council Rule Changes on page 38, and I think we are at Counselor O'Bry, please.
Resolution adopting the changes to the rules of procedure to govern the 31st Town Council. Whereas the Town Council Temporary Rules and Procedure Committee met on March 26, 2019, and whereas Chairman Heath introduced and discussed minor changes to be made to Rule 9-Committees and Referrals A, deleting the Public Safety Committee and Rule 10 Committee Procedures, replacing each session adjourns to a definite time, fix the time to which the adjournment to each session recesses to a different time, fix the time to which the recess end, and, whereas the Temporary Rules and Procedure Committee approved the changes at said meeting, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council approves the changes made to Rule 9-Committees and Referrals A, deleting the Public Safety Committee and Rule 10 Committee Procedures, one, making the change each session recesses to a definite time, fix the time to which it, which, to which to recess.
Second.
Moved by O'Bry and seconded by Heath. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-232-1, Town Council Rule Changes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, so moved unanimously. That is all the agenda items. We are on to Roman numeral 11, Other Business. Do any counselors have other business to come before the committee, or the council? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Moved by Atwater, seconded by Parker. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, so moved unanimously. We adjourned at 7:50.